All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start our 5:45 work session. So I'm going to pass it over to Manager David to discuss the wastewater treatment plan.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's talk about this wastewater treatment plant and water plant. How much is the price of it when they own? I'm going to be as, what was his name, Rick? You say Rocky Hedrick. You say I'm going to be honest with you. Rocky Hedrick was the president for construction years ago. And I worked, Black worked for him. I was buying him out years ago. He always used that term, "I'm going to be honest with you." Well, I'm going to be honest during the, I'm not really prepared for this meeting. So I'm going to wing it the best I can. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to turn in on with the B R A. I know that they'll rip it to shreds and do their due diligence like they always do. And they'll change as we move along. So I want to go back a little bit. And Susan and Lee Ed and Robin have put an amazing PowerPoint together that's got a massive amount of data in it. And I know it's going to pop up sometimes, but I don't really know how.
Your computer operators.
So. Okay. So let me talk to you a little bit. We'll go back just a little bit. And then Rick is also giving, might be able to save you some time. Rick gets you into work session if you want to.
Okay.
But if you'll recall, loan one was originally estimated like four years ago when we first did the rate hike. So you've got to start somewhere, but it was estimated at 10 billion, five, 10 billion, six fifty-six, forty-six. We had 30% principal forgiveness off of that number from D E Q. And that left a balance of a little over $7.4 million. As each of you know, our PSA partners are at 40% on this project, which left a balance of 44. There are some other numbers in there, by the way, that are off this project. But I can tell you that 4.4, they're extremely redundant. And I didn't take a whole lot of time to go back and find the other $100,000. So it's absolutely redundant. The annual payment over 25 years, we got it at 0%, came in 179, 21. I put a 10% padding on there just because I've done it a few times. I also had a 16% inflation. So what we did, as each of you know, we already have the 25% cover sitting in the L G I P. These rates have been in place for a while. But the rates that we set years ago, and everybody's got an opinion, were shy on an average of about $40,000 a year. The next year, they'd be up. It's just really hard to target a dollar figure. So we went back and over the last week, and we looked at our actual water rates. And I think the key month was March. Is that right?
March of 2023.
March of 2023. So March of 2023 proved to be our least water sale month. So for whatever reason, people had already washed their cars against the winter. I don't know what it was. It was, it was just that month out of the whole physical year, it was less water use. Well, I have to make that debt service payment. So I'm being a little more aggressive. Instead of using an average, I'm pulling down to the worst case scenario that we have in place right there. So we're just trying to refine those numbers and make them to where in today's economy, there was also like 1.5 million gallons less sold. And I don't know why, you know, maybe people with inflation, I don't know. I have no idea. And you know, there's, I had a conversation last night with somebody. They were talking about all the baby boomers that are retiring this time. And it's just, you wouldn't believe what's going into the economy and being able to employ people and find them. It's just, it's unbelievable. But to really narrow this thing down, we had $228,000 after 16% free year inflation, which gave you a target number of $230,000. One other thing I want to throw out there, we had this discussion. I know Dr. Catherine, my Dave, don't remember several years back, but we write off a whole lot of money annually, a lot. Last year in water, it was 100 or some thousand. Sewer was 97,000 gallons. That's a chunk of change, especially when you're getting audited as an enterprise fund in both of them combined.
So is that for the people water leaks?
Yeah, it's for water.
What's the sewer? I mean, wow, what are sewer leaks?
Well, if they, if we adjust on the water leak, they're obviously not using sewer. So it goes both ways. There are some exceptions to that, like unneeded water and unneeded sewer.
Shouldn't those be almost identical?
Well, they have different dollars per gallon. And it's different scenarios. What does that mean?
Nothing. I'm just trying to very quietly open the can.
I heard.
It's not a beer, I promise.
Well, I was going to say juice.
Yeah, exactly. Not to share.
So.
One for a try of beer.
I fully realize that we've raised rates for three consecutive years. And this is not one of them for sewer. So we're done with that. What we did last year, I'm just starting from scratch to be sure I get some math right and pick up some, some economic differences that have overwhelmed everybody. So my key number that I'm coming up with is $230,000 as a target on loan one. Now, we're going to come back to it. And by the way, in that number is also bond, literally bond one. It's 450 some thousand dollars. But I still got to make that debt service payment. So it's just all in there. I'm not taking it out. I could have showed a reduction of that bond one. But anyway, the second part of this loan, because of the economy and inflation, was pushing $9 million. So T and L estimated it at eight, eight something. I might look at it and say, because I know something's 19 or whatever, 9 million. But if you take $19 million project today, which, you know, four years ago, three years ago, was 10.6, and you subtract out the 10.6, and you realize that the PSA is picking up 40%, okay, that leaves you a principal of $5,600,000. Now, look, we don't have the same deal. And Rick, you chime in anytime. But we don't have the same principal forgiveness, John. And we do only firsthand. That's the reason I separated the two loans, because I can't do simultaneous engineering economics with two different baselines. So I can't do it. Maybe somebody can. But anyway, so we're looking at 25 years on that project. And we might, we might get 1%, maybe, principal forgiveness. It might come in, which will just pay for the interest. But I'm using a, I'm using a fair, I'm using 1% here. Some of you might say, Todd, you might want to bump it up to 2, 3. We might go out to the private sector on this and look and see what we can get after an advert on these two. But it's hard to do that when you have bond one at 0%. I know a local bank ain't going to give you 0%. We'll work, we'll figure it out to the best interest. But that project right there, even though it's less money in it, it's $290,000. And it's because of the interest rate. And it's not, you don't have the principal forgiveness in there.
So. Todd, one of the things I might mention. Todd asked me about the funding terms, this overrun. They won't tell you. I know for a fact there's very little 0% money out there. What I have seen them doing here recently is they will offer 0.5%. And then amortize that interest over 25 years. And whatever that is, they'll give you a principal forgiveness amount to make it balance to zero. That's not given. Another thing I'm hoping, and we won't know this until we get it out on the market, get bids again. But in February or March, Mr. Rand with D E Q has indicated they may get some more principal forgiveness money from EPA. She don't know how much, she don't know what, when. But the town of Tadaway could possibly qualify for some of that. But I told Todd, if I was sitting here in issues and you guys, I would want to look at the worst case scenario. And anything better than that is just broken. And because it's so many, like Todd said, we have already started contacting some of the pre-qualified contractors we had before. We still highly recommend you do that. We want a contractor that knows how builders should blank bids. D E Q will let us do that. We had 13 pre-qualified the first time. Only had three bids, or two bids, was the third. Now, by the way, this is Ms. Pam Young that works with me. Pam is helping me out. My wife hired, I'm getting old, so she's helping me through this process. But Pam's a real nice lady and very familiar with this type of work and stuff. But I do think my concern, and I told Todd, is I don't have them. We riding on borrowed time on both of us.
So I just, I'm throwing this out there just, I mean, you can tell me since you've done this a lot longer. Are there any monies that we could apply for with the economic or the ecological diversity of the Clinch River? How, you know, they're dying over those clamps or mussels or?
No, see, D E Q was real big on that. The only ones got grant dollars is D E Q. I was hoping she would, they call it the, y'all call it ARPA money, but she calls it the B I L money, bipartisan infrastructure law money. I was hoping we could get that, but that's already been acknowledged. So I agree with Todd. I think to approach this thing with the worst case scenario.
It's a half percent difference from that. So I got 1%, he gives 1%. So anyway, but that's $520,000 annual, a potential annual. If you add the two together, the two numbers, the two figures together, the 230 and 290, that's a chunk of change right there, buddy. But Susan, if you'll go over the debt service payment, if you can pull that screen up, anyway.
We're wearing a screen.
Thank you very much.
I want y'all to look at this. Okay, so this, I was, I was just saying, you know, we spent hours and hours and hours looking at, looking at the best method and scenario. It's always been an objective of mine to try and concentrate. And I'll do anything, obviously, council wants to do, but try to concentrate on the base because of our senior citizens in the community and expenses. Everybody's got to pay that. The thing about the base is it's also, as close as you get, David, to a guaranteed revenue. So you know everybody's going to pay it. So there's a little bit of, just, you just got to think about that. That's, you know, so I try to, I try to split the difference gamble a little bit, but not a whole lot. But try to make decisions based, based on that understanding.
Can we step back? So the, we discussed earlier about what we're losing per year because of adjustments in water delivery. And right around $200,000. So if we come to some type of agreement to maybe not 100% cover a water adjustment, but maybe 50% cover, that gives us in theory an additional $100,000.
Yeah, it's a great, love it, yeah. But, you know, the.
But we have one adjustment a year.
Right. There's always exceptions to every rule.
Right.
But we give one adjustment a year unless it's a special situation out there. And there are, but we usually give one adjustment per year. And as far as I know.
And you only do that if they bring in the repair bill and?
We're laying in on that. We don't want you to have to go hire somebody if you can fix it.
Can you name another locality that goes on it? That takes care of the water, or not fix it, but takes care of the water bill when the problem happens inside the first couple?
Oh.
So every, every, everyone else?
Yeah, every time I work for has a water adjustment problem. And most times it's one year. One year. I know somebody is trying to do it.
Oh, it's a bunch of them. It's a bunch of them trying. Three, four, five.
Yes, I am. We need three, if they're town.
Yeah, they're town.
These are apartments, and I'm in what are in which it's made or paid for. Take away, take the load off the main one.
So anyway, I guess we'll talk about that at another time. One, one thing that the previous council did was we saved a lot of money by saying, you can have an adjustment, but it has to be 3,000 gallons above average. So if you come in one month and you've had Christmas vacation and you've had the family there and you use another 1,500 gallons, I'm sorry. You know, you just can't, you can't say a tour completely. It's got to be 3,000 gallons. We do it all the time. We write off every gallon. So that really helps a lot. And there's been, I know one elected official that said, if it runs through your meter, I'll pay for it. It's your league, it's your loan, it's your fault, you all pay for it. So I guarantee if you leave the heater on, you call A and D and you say, let me let the heater on. I'll pay for it. They'll say thank you. Well, yes, I'm. They don't care. We'll bang it. We'll get through this real quick. Back in 2018, 19, which is the second column over here, that was our water rates at that time. We kind of call that, we kind of call that a base rate. You've got a lot of numbers up here that are really administratively handled in the computer system, such as PSA, that's customers out of town. So don't conflate. Just look at the top, the top where it says on upper left-hand corner, sewer residential, that, all of that across there is what we're concentrating on. The previous increase was $3 per account. And we did that over three consecutive years. So it was a dollar a year. The new increase to pick up the difference that's out there is 3.32. So we can do that over two or three years. But bottom line, we're chasing down $3.327 on the base just to get to that 5.90, that 5.20, I mean. And then on the second tier, it's 4.50. Our studying is saying 5. So we're going up 50%. I'm really trying to hook out of town. And this may help you one day when we go to Anex and they do it and live out of town. We don't fault them, but they should live in. So anyway, Rick, I'm sorry, but if you were on our system, your water rates are going up up there. So they're going from 3 to 5.05 and from 5.25 to 6.75. We feel really confident that those numbers right there will produce what we, what we're looking for. And also, as you know, they have 16% inflation over three years. It's also got an accuracy. And just, you know, I'm gun shy. I mean, I was short on that last run by about 40. It's not bad, but it's high and low. But on average, just a little short. We have over half a million dollars sitting in LGIP because of these water hikes. And we continue to feed that based on a 10.6 price. Of course, that's all the rates we have. So I just wanted to pass that out there. I know that T and L is ready to move forward with advertising this project. And what I'll do is I'll turn that into more regardless. Somebody asked the council to vote on it. I'm just showing you, you know, what it's going to take. And some of you may say, well, do you need a dump truck? Some of you may say, do you need a replacement backhoe? Do you need this? Do you need a new garage? Do you need, well, I can go on forever. So that number is minimum of what it's going to take to satisfy the debt service payment. And I feel comfortable with it. Staff has worked really hard on putting a worst case scenario when it comes to gallons. I mean, it's, I feel really confident on it when it comes to B R A. And they're going to, they have, they have a new.
Have you contracted the money in the LGI P into this?
Well, we have to have a 25% bond cover. But not, I know it's there and it'll always be there. And eventually we'll get criticized for not planning on spending money. It'll get spent, you know, but that 25% bond cover on Mike's team there is pretty heavy. It'll get there soon. They, what did 25, Rick, was?
I think what they made, that was what it was when that girl was there.
Audrey was there.
She's gone now. But Joe Burge and Ron with B R A, he's talked the whole entire line, maybe 15.
Well, we'll see, you know, they, you know, I hate to keep going through this, but you know, B R A, we were ready to bid this project, sir. And B R A came in after award to the project.
That was 19.
Then they wanted to cure us.
Because we had 10 at first, didn't we?
10 million.
40% at first.
Actually, there was, they've never mentioned a bond cover before.
We were ready to go. And we could have got this out before all this COVID stuff here.
The irony, the irony of this thing, that was everything that we had put in place, rate hike wise, nothing's changed. Not a bit of, nothing, nothing changed at all. Audrey's not there anymore. I can't figure out why.
I think the house was on the one.
Oh, 1.75. Yeah, that's a lot of money. So we still, we still have to build on that. But you know, the bond cover, I don't think, I think it's annual. I think it's just, you have to have that bond cover, 25% of annual.
Todd, I'm not sure. Are they talking about possibly, I know with towns, they always want to look at a double barrel.
Yes, G O.
G O and revenue. I don't know if they're talking about that on this one or not.
But I do, I am confident that we're in better shape now than what we were with B R A. But it's all come at a price.
That's because you grew rates.
Yeah, we raised rates and we've been, we've been big at LGI P too. Before, when we first started, we didn't have, we didn't have any money there. We wouldn't have, we just didn't have it.
When that came down to, we needed to get that 25%, there was a lot of things that got unfunded that year.
Yeah, the water ran down my car.
I believe in all fairness that our Audrey lady, she knew that. And that's what she's trying to dig in. Because she's looking out for the best interest of the gender resource that are already custard. She's like her mom.
It's a river, crossing different times. It's a different headache, but I'm telling you. Anyways, all right. So if I have any questions on that, on sewer. So again, I'll turn those numbers into B R A. That those numbers are what it's going to take to make the debt service payments on Mike's team. They'll look at them, evaluate them, ask me where I got them, where I come up with. They'll do the whole nine yards, do what they do. Doesn't mean, it doesn't mean we have to adopt those. But I know that T and L, they need to know whether you want to proceed with the project. And you've got a pretty accurate number there of.
Off this from back in March? This one we were looking at back in March, March 23, down there at 16. So we've gone from 16 to 19 on this.
Hey, no, Rick. This is your question.
Can I write small two?
It's a total, it's a total project called 16th Construction and Balance related. If you look over here, it's around, I think, Paul, around 18 project.
So being optimistic, when T and L goes forward and you're getting bids, could it come in lower with the economy kind of a little bit? We know that it was still going up, some were going up. Everything's overpriced, but is there a chance that?
Well, if you remember what we did, we put the high bid at the low bid and we averaged. That's the only way I knew right then, I gave them the construction. I talked to Todd and everybody, both of us sat fire with it. We may be blessed to get a good contractor with the lowest problems. But it's kind of like I asked them about the any principal forgiveness. And I said, well, what's the bid? I said, well, we ain't got that. Well, what's the bid? So the process that we would ask if councilwoman pursued is if you want to authorize us to let us go back to the, and re-advertise the pre-qualified contractors that can build wastewater plants, we'll go right back to the ones we had before and any more. Once we do that, that's about a 60-day process minimum in payment. Then we ask them to give us, they're the only ones that's allowed to bid on it. We get their bids, we're going to put a 90-day award period from the time we get their bids to allow us to get the new budget, get B R A and D E Q to close a loan and see what they're going off you. Now, again, you always have that option of rejecting a loan. But I'm going to say this, I think we're all living on borrowed time. It's just a matter of time.
Are contractors, they guaranteeing their bids for 90 days now? Or as before, it was like two weeks or something?
They are doing better because of material. There with the plants, some of these valves and fiddings, especially catch things. But they're a little harder to get. But what we have done is we've worked with the contract finished. This contractor eight comes in, he's loaned me. We come to council, get the financing worked out. And the contractor says, if you'll award it to me, I'll go ahead and get my stuff ordered. But don't issue me notice to proceed until about four months till I get it. So they've done it that way. So we've tried to work. So we've tried to work our way around that, but the big process is just get the council blessing to take that home. I'll be glad to answer any other questions. I think I've bored y'all with that with the place.
Okay, so just to let you know, um, today's, today's current water rate's in town of thirty-fifty. You'll be going to thirty-three eighty-two. Out of town is ten eighty-five. Out of town's ti- uh, forty-five fifty. Yeah, so you'll be going to fifty-fifty. And then you got in-town over, see, those things are, they're just, anyway, fifteen, twenty-five, fifteen, fifteen, ninety. So I guess we can talk about it all night. If you have any questions about.
For that, that increase, is it projected over three years or?
Yeah, well, I, I can, Rick, you're free. We're six, we're six months on what, two?
Where, if we started tonight, we'd be minimum of four to five months to start construction. Yeah, once you start construction, you're eighteen to twenty-four months to finish. After you complete construction, DEQ will give you six months' payment.
And I've got enough money in the LGIP to free you.
Maybe two weeks spread it out.
Yeah.
It'd be a little bit easier.
Yeah. VRA's the last one, too. And what for the amount of money in the LGIP, I fucking agree. And plus, it wouldn't come into effect till July. I mean, I could hold it out to July. There's enough money.
Not July.
Okay, so let's jump to water really fast. The increase, if you look at your, I think each of you in your package actually have, have this copy right here. Um, and this is the water project, and ironically, I would have never, I would have never thought it. Um, I want to remind the council, this is a material-only project. Some locality would call it a, a force attempt.
It's on that.
We're doing it in-house. Uh, we have a relationship with the PSA. Uh, they're gonna give us three, um, employees to do this project. They're also, they're also paying fifty percent of the project, which is not a typical understanding for, for a project like this. It's usually a split there, so, um, but they're gonna pay fifty percent of this project. So if you can pull up that document, then we'll take off and go through that.
It's a water spreadsheet.
Yeah. And what we did, we updated them. We updated the numbers on gravel and, uh, and asphalt. And I used full depth. It's a three-foot ditch, it's a three-foot ditch, but I guarantee you, till we get done with it, it'll be five foot to cover the, the rocks that's going over that hill. Um, and it stood up subtracting eight inches, eight inches of SM nineteen or SM twenty-five asphalt. I just used full depth, and I still feel like I need to add another five foot to it, but anyway. Um, and I just did a total takeoff on length, on total width and depth, on asphalt, and it's about twenty-five dollars a ton trucking. Um, and gravel, the same thing, twenty-five dollars a ton trucking. And the numbers we came up with were a little lower than, of, uh, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars combined, so. There, there's a contingency in there, and the rest of it's just material and some related costs. Um, but just to go over this, in-town would increase by seventy-three percent, I mean seventy-three cents. Um, out-of-town would increase at a dollar twenty-five. Um, and the in-town over two thousand would increase by a dollar twenty, and out-of-town a dollar twenty-five. And, uh, that project is a three-year, that's a three-year project. Rick, Rick, I know it's four hundred thousand dollar grant money from three consecutive years.
She's got it all in place now. When we started, you know, we delayed it, she was gonna give four hundred thousand each year.
Yeah.
It's the four hundred, that the one point two million grants in place and the one point three million dollar loan is in place that you and the PSA split. Uh, the, uh, only things, once we do get them bids, they will go back to her and see if she's got any more money for the short call. Cause we're looking at all three phases now, any material.
Well, the short call is, is five eighty-two. Uh, so I, I think you might have some math in there. So it was a three million dollar project. We have four years, three years and four hundred thousand dollar principal forgiveness. Um, if you subtract, you pull all that down, it's one point eight million. And knowing that the PSA is paying fifty percent of that, that's nine hundred forty-one thousand dollars. Now, this one here, this extra additional money, Rick, and again, chime in, Rick, something's changed since I talked, but there is no grant money out there. This, this, this money right here, right now is.
I talked to Kelly Ward, she is the main lady over the water. She has expended all of her principal forgiveness position, she has none left. She's looking at next year's financing, but she said, Rick, I am not gonna start making promises of money. I don't have myself. So again, we're back to the situation, bid it, see what they are, go back to her. She may say, I, I can give y'all sorts of loan money, but I can't give you any grant money. And her loan money may be one and a half percent.
The last award letter that we got for this project, um, was one percent below the double A municipal bond rate. And I can tell you that the double A municipal bond rating last week was four point six five. So if you use three point six five or four percent, I mean, I don't know what to do here. Y'all's guess is good as mine. If y'all wanna go with five percent, we'll do that. It's a gamble. I don't know what it's gonna be, bro.
Is there a fiscal year, January, December, or?
Yes, and no, it starts July, the June.
And she's already out for all the way to next year.
Well, what happened, she's mad because the General Assembly, not the state, but the Congress, took sixteen million dollars of her principal forgiveness out of her budget that the genuine had got and give it to Loudoun County.
How much time?
She said for no reason.
So.
Loudoun County.
So I took it.
And this is how the picture right over.
I'm not shocked.
No.
Everything is going on loud.
Amazon needed to put that warehouse in there.
That's it. And, and, and for those of you all that are stressing over the uncertainty here, this tip, it's typical for every project you ever get into when you involve grant money, fund it. If you're going to reach in your pocket and drag out ten million dollars, it's a whole lot easier to do math. But when you're working with funding, it just the way it is. Um, they gave you an annual debt service payment of sixty-eight thousand. Uh, and if you add ten percent to it, and I figured distance, I've been over two years, it's eight percent, four percent inflation here. Uh, but that gave me a seventy-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars, so I'm gonna target eighty thousand dollars. That was my objective, target eighty thousand dollars here, and get, gave us some cushion, plus it helped on, it helped on that seventy-some thou- I mean, hundred and twelve thousand dollar rights, Supreme. Wasn't a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Wasn't a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and right up. So anyway, uh, I feel really confident with those, with those numbers right there. Um, we can use, like I said, the same thing with sewer. We use the worst-case scenario when it came to water consumption. Um, we use a total of twenty-six percent in various inflation categories over three years. I don't know what the economy's gonna do. I don't wanna get kicked around like I did last time. If it, if it comes, if it comes around, I've never seen a locality do it, but you can always reduce your rates. Or you can always say, let's update something. I mean, I've never seen that done, but obviously, I don't know what to do here. My guess is good job. I'm just, I'm just saying that, that to me, Emily, the worst case, I mean, I.
We raised water when we raised sewer, those three.
We're in our last year of water rate.
We're in.
We're in our last year of water rate. Unfortunately, we gotta go back up. So, okay, again, uh.
I talked.
Yes, absolutely.
Folks, y'all, I, Hambridge Land is going through it again, too. They just had public size rate increases. I don't know if it's gonna be enough. VRA will let it go. But they're going through it. Every client we got right now is going through Hambridge's rate increases. You just don't have that type of money set in land to deal with this type of stuff, so.
Any of you have any, any questions? I know you're, I know you've all probably had questions, unfortunately, there's nothing concrete here. I, I honestly don't, I honestly think, and Zach, you're in the financial industry, but I don't, I feel like if I go to get a bond, or even if I get a, a loan, it doesn't have to be a bond, but I think four percent, I mean, I mean, I mean, not, I don't know. I mean, I'm a gambler here, but between that and what they may do, I'd want six percent. Probably more like six percent, but maybe, maybe the health department will come back or something.
I hope, I know.
I can figure it, six percent, me on the conservative side.
Will the local market let you extend it after twenty-five, thirty years?
I don't know. I honestly don't. I had, uh, my city bank, but the bank is on the corner right there at Fourway one time, come back with it. With the term length on the project we didn't put in place.
Kelly may let you that extra, that's your money, you need to go through the years, it's time for that. I don't have a problem with that. I do mechanical stuff, but.
No.
Start talking big, big money, break it.
On this project, we had talked, cause this is to increase water flow to fire height.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
It was discussed moving this, like, I think originally, like, all the way up to the camp, but there was some kind of talk about, well, they would get to the hardest. Right. Bridge, and, and that checks the box to the intent.
Great comment, great, great topic to talk about. So the, um, running it out to the four lane improved obviously fire flow, but it was more domestic, it's more domestic than anything. And, and, you know, obviously it'll help fire flow. Uh, we've not been cited on any fire flow issues by the health department in years, and I don't, you know, knock on wood, but they come in here every year and inspect us, um, but I've not, Charles says, Charles, rest, retired, we're all in. But.
I mean, honestly, the way I look at it, it's an opportunity for you to have a partner to help replace your clients.
We looked at.
It, it, this is, this is, of course. Yeah, thi- this is only material that's up there. This is, and by the way, I've got to open, cut that ditch, and it's gonna be in the middle of Finn Castle. This has got an overlay in it, uh, it's got backfill in it, but it doesn't have pavement. So by the time we destroy that, draw it down through there, a year later, citizens will bitch in the depth if you don't pay it, but it's not, uh, total overlay is not in there. It's not, it's not included in that, maybe it should be, but they don't have to pay for it, so. By the way, if they do pay for it, I mean, they might go pay for it. Um, and Zach, uh, there had been a question about the cost to take it all the way out. And this, this is the cost to take it all the way out. And I'll tell you, I've been in communication with Jane, they're a partner on both these projects, by the way. Um, talked to Rick, and we're actually gonna look at this project, Zach, hopefully, after, right after Thanksgiving, the holiday was really messing us up. She recommended to me Tuesday next week, and I'm gonna try to have a life of, so, um, we're planning to meet with them, and it may end up being, Rick, and again, I hate to keep calling on him, but it may end up being, Zach, and we, we come in agreement with the engineers, they're just going to Hardee's, putting the DRV in, may be in the best interest, but I think, I think it was actually you who wanted to see what the cost was, and that's it. And we're gonna talk about it.
So what, for both of these projects, what do we have to do for the next steps? Because they keep coming up for a couple of years.
Yeah, well, we put them off for two years, because we were hoping that tide would change, so, um, all, all you need to do tonight is just acknowledge that you wanna move forward, um, and T and L will pick it up from there. You see the rate hikes, you're gonna have to put in place a worst-case scenario just to adjust the project. Now, two months from now, in, you know, January, February, I'm gonna be coming back to you, and we're gonna be talking about the budget as it exists again. Um, and we're gonna be working on that, so, these are just a couple of projects. Any questions? All I need is to go ahead if you wanna do that. If you wanna raise the rate today, because we ain't got much choice, but I'm just, all I need is to go ahead if you wanna do it.
I don't assume we have a choice.
And they're not as aggressive as I thought they, they would have been. I mean, they're big hikes, especially if you look at the last round, which had them both together here in town.
We can be placed there. Yeah, a bit of money is interesting.
It will be. If you compare ours, and I know a locality would like to do this, but if you compare ours to PSA, you still buy.
I was gonna tell you that Jane, their department, they've already started raising their rates.
Yeah. So. They got like a six-year plan.
They did, they've done a six-year plan.
We're on three years, but they're looking at.
I mean, we know it has to be done. I mean, it's a little structure issue, and they have to start doing some. Pretty good confidence there, it sounds like. So we're on like a three-year spur for looking at increases. Just what it, this one's based on getting a couple of projects approved. Just a, is there a concept there? You said before, you didn't inherit an LGIP to five hundred K, and you were set up for failure when you tried to attack the project before.
Sure.
If we looked at this as a, a longer term, six-year term.
Right.
May those, you're gonna expect a one percent increase in whatever it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, it could take pressure on the future councils, because that's, I mean, we know that the federal government's got a social inflation, the price is gonna have to increase anyway. We could get out in front of it and, uh, and have a plan, six-year, six-year, ten-year plan.
Absolutely. And I can do this. I can do that. I wanna echo again for anybody that, and I have a hard time sometimes coming across, but these numbers are for your debt service payment. And I'll be coming back in the next couple of months and giving you an extended, extended plan. We'll, we'll look at that collectively together and see exactly where we wanna go with that and how you wanna do it.
That's for six years. Yeah, we're gonna three.
This is the three.
Yeah.
But what we're talking about, what Zach and I are talking about is, in two months, when we go into budget allocation, is looking at some of our deeper projects that need to be looked at, like our pump stations, something of that nature, needs to be upgraded.
They highly recommend, all these agencies highly recommend a, a minimal of a two percent increase thirty years.
It's funny, take them to shower.
Always, always. Uh, al- always, yeah, always.
That's kind of like standard business practice.
Yeah.
Maybe they're gonna have price increases.
Yeah, and I think if you do it that way, folks get, get used, they may not like it, but at least they get used to it. When you go in there and hit them with a fifteen percent rate increase, that's gonna burn your house down, you know? But they're a little bit out of time, I think folks understand that. You don't have that type, like I said, money laying on, I'm gonna take care of it like you.
This will be six years, if we do it, only on the debt service.
Yep, no, no extra.
Yeah.
I think it's the call, the call for the box keeps going up. I mean, this is, I say, price keeps going up, I mean, you took a great big mass jump.
I think jumping in on it now and getting started since we can, and save us money in the future when it's an emergency and you have to spend another three months fixing water lines and another, we have a catastrophe.
Okay, I'm sorry, I go ahead. Um, just for the record, she, she has kept a minute, but is council okay with giving T and L, um, authority to proceed forward with their project? We're giving T and M authority to proceed forward with their project, to understand that, that these rates that are up here are worst case scenario.
Do you have a slide that shows both of these, or together, what the total amount is?
Oh, total, that's a good question. No, I don't, but I can, I can fix y'all one up tomorrow and send it out. Yeah, so you, you had like a six dollar, when it came to sewer, you had six dollars. You had three now, you had three before, that's six, and then you're looking at, so, but no, we can do that, see you sometime.
Hard to help construction trade, I'll tell you this, and that's a good time to be trying to get constructions bid, as far as contractors love to know they got work coming in the spring.
Y'all okay with that? Anybody opposed to the physical line?
Do we have to move?
I think she's taking minutes over, so. No, you don't have to vote, I mean, if you're adamant, they don't wanna do it, obviously that's. Rick, while she's taking minutes, it's my understanding, standing right here in front of my entire council, if they wanna proceed forward with both the projects, and just let me know what I can do.
All, all you need to do is to send me an email or a letter tomorrow and say please proceed with the wastewater plant project and then right four seconds.
I'll send it, I know, because you won't get it. Should we one of them do? Yes, that's all I've got, you know, we can take a break, that's all I've got, I'm just gonna bother you. Again, uh, I wanna also say we're gonna meet in the next couple of weeks with Jane and B S A, and it may, it may be David, some of them water rates, I'll come back, but they'll look at that.
God, it's gonna make you, the water rates goes, yeah.
Hold one time.
In a blast, and that's gonna make a lot of people hot in this town.
They ain't seen nothing yet, but I'm telling you, it's, they're calm.
It's bad, it's really bad.
It's telephone number, but, but just keep in mind, all your neighbors are going through it too.
Yeah, I'd like to help the, the neighbors that's feeling, yeah, step by step and.
Oh, yeah.
I tell you, folks, this code, your economy just kills. Folks, you don't need this, we'll get out.
No, you're good, we'll take you off, it's just we'll get home early enough.
If I don't see y'all, you'll have a happy Thanksgiving.
You better, nice meeting you. We're gonna take a break until six forty-five. Councilmember, councilmember Davis. Councilmember Foch. Councilmember Beasley. Councilmember Hankins. Councilmember Foch. Alright, so we're done with the executive session. Those here for the joint public hearing, sorry for our tardiness, we had some good discussions. So, I'd like to call to order the joint public hearing, uh, for the request to partially close Orchard Street, that alley. But Todd or Chris, you wanna give us some information on that before we go to public?
This is the, it's not any part of Orchard Street, it's a town, it's just a ninety-degree turn and end up, we could straight up evil. There's actually a store doing on it now, and person in rates, and it looks like that, and I just like that part.
So is there any member of, of public here to discuss this, this issue? Okay, so we will, uh, end the joint public hearing, and we'll reconvene for the regular town council meeting at seven thirty. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Tassel County Town Council Meeting. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance at the occasion.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Nate, would you lead us in?
Of course. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for the freedom to gather and assemble, for the freedom to discuss, and have open and honest discussion, Lord. Ask you to watch over the meeting tonight, that cooler heads prevail, that we come to an understanding and agree there about whatever issue we may face, that we all leave, you know, we're active citizens in our town. In Jesus' name, amen.
So first on the agenda is the special presentation request. We've got the recognition of Chase Roberts, Jonathan Hankins, and Cindy, if you'll act come up and give us explanation.
Good evening, thank you all for attending tonight. I'd like to thank the mayor and fellow council members, manager Dave, for the opportunity for me to get to recognize a fellow coworker. This is Patrick Chase Roberts. We'd like to recognize him for his exemplary actions he's done just straight over the past six months on two different occasions while working at the Sheriff's Office. The first one was back on May the twenty-sixth. All the town attached Williams S were tied up on emergency traffic, and a third called nine-one-one called in. So Captain Willbink, with the EMS responsive, began assessing the patient and determined that she needed to be transported to the hospital. However, they didn't have a driver. So dispatcher Roberts actually switched his lunch with another dispatcher, so he could come and drive a rescue squad to transport the patient to the hospital. And then the last time was just a couple of weeks ago. Captain Davis, who's in, actually took dispatcher Roberts' place in dispatch to allow him to drive. And by doing that, really, you know, improved the patient's chances of survival, because her, her, excuse me, her condition was deteriorating. So by her getting to the hospital quicker, you know, probably saved her life. And, you know, Chase is nineteen years old, one of the youngest dispatchers to be hired at the Sheriff's Office. He's been with the Fire Department for five years, and I think probably been around the Fire Department much longer than that. And I think that's just a true dedication of public service, boy, he's shown, and, you know, I'd just like to recognize him tonight.
I also wanted to recognize you, of course, you went above and above and assisted us, you know, with EMS and fire calls, and, um, you know, you're John Young's boss when we called you there, and we really appreciate that, so.
I really, I really appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it. This is a, you know, a true testament of what public service should be, service of itself. And I want to thank, can I catch Randy and Davis? And Sheriff Hyde for coming tonight, and they're very supportive of dispatch and all the sheriff's office. And without them, we couldn't do what we do, and it's just an honor to get to recognize fellow coworkers.
And all the agencies working together.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have a C D B G planning grant update by Amanda Killen.
I'm back. So last month, to recall, we had a brief update about the community development grant, planning grant for East River Side Drive in North Tassle. And this current update is, we got the grant. So, Town of Tassle receives fifty thousand dollars from the Department of Housing and Community Development to conduct planning activities for East River Side Drive. We're waiting on communication from the A T D to begin that process. We have to have a facilitated planning meeting, and then we need to provide the ongoing updated budget and work plan. So we look for that in the coming weeks. Todd, have you heard anything from those folks yet? So surely in the coming days, but we wanted to give you an update and let you know what was going on in case, I'm sure a press release will be forthcoming, and you may hopefully get some enthusiasm from the citizens in North Tassle. So hopefully you know what's going on. Any questions?
Thank you. Great job. So next on the agenda is Back of the Dragon O T R, Amanda Gilbert.
Okay, without, without bringing, we're sending the, last year we had made a ten thousand dollar donation, Back of the Dragon, to have a two-day event. I think they're wanting to extend that to fiscal year, and they have a request in for fixing that with a dollar donation to make that event.
I just need a motion, we can put it in next, but we hear about that.
Do you know when they're planning this, so we don't have a date yet?
I think it's always the second weekend of June.
Second weekend of June.
That's what, what we did last year, was make the donation for last year in this fiscal year, right?
That is correct. So Todd, I'm gonna take lack of a motion as lack of interest.
I think that we'd like to, to talk about this a little more before we decide on the amount.
So they have a deadline when they need.
Cause the increase is five.
Yeah, the increase, cause it increased by five thousand dollars, we wanted to see, you know, what the plans are and.
I can ask, I can reply back to the same email, ask them to elaborate on the project.
I just think, I'd like a little more info.
We'll move it to next month. So next on the agenda is the Tassel County Chamber of Commerce, Kisho Cole.
Thank you all, and that's exactly why we're here, is to thank you all. You know, the Oktoberfest, the first one that was held on Main Street Tassle was in two thousand sixteen. And the event continued to grow, and of course, then two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one weren't able to have it. Um, but this past year was the first one we've had back on Main Street since two thousand nineteen. And from all the feedback we've received from everyone, it was just a huge success. It was a very fun evening, very safe evening, um, and it's a great event for our young adults, for something, for them, for them to attend to. So, we just want to thank the town, thank you all for the approval, thank Todd Day, especially our Public Works crew, those guys from nine A M until we close up the street, probably around midnight. They are working nonstop. These guys are phenomenal, they, they really don't even have to give them much direction, they know what they're supposed to do. Uh, they put those lights up, they set the tables up, they just, they do so much. Our, um, police department for keeping it a safe event, uh, the A N Ts for being there on standby in case we need them, but just the entire town, so thank you all so very, very much for your support. So, on behalf of the chamber and our board of directors and our October request committee, we would like to present the Town of Tassle a certificate, and thank you for your support, your hard work, and your dedication.
Thank you. So I've removed the donation request for Main Street Merch Association, we've taken care of that already. Next new business recognition, unfortunately, we don't have any this month. So now I need a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, on favor of approval, State of Black and White. Jumping ahead.
One second.
I got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, State of Black and White? All opposed, State of Black and White? Alright, the minutes are approved. So next is the approval of the financial statements and financial report from October seventeenth. Need a motion to approve? Push it through. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, State of Black and White? All opposed, State of Black and White? Alright, financial statements and financial report approved. So next is our committee and conference updates. Councilmember Davis is gonna give us a planning commission committee update.
Uh, we had a planning commission meeting on November sixth, and we talked about reselling a piece of property that's on the edge of town. The entity that owns the property is looking into possibly putting solar panels on it to feed their building, to supply power for their building. We do not have a official application for that yet, so we didn't take any action on it, we just talked about it. Uh, we also talked about, um, updating the, um, ordinance about discharging firearms in town, just to provide a little bit more clarification in it and how that would work. That was it.
So the solar panels, does that fall within the latest?
They were talking about reselling the piece of property, so it would fall within that classification. And it is right on the edge of town. But, like I said, we don't have an official application yet, so there wasn't any action taken.
Thank you. So next is, uh, our EMS director's gonna give us a EMS update.
Alright Cindy.
This is good news this time.
Was last time too.
I just wanted to give you all a little update on what's going on. I know a lot of people in Town of Tassle, all they do is sleep and run calls, you know, they do a lot more, but we do. We've been, we've been trying to get a lot more active in the community. We stood by, you know, for October Festival, we used to do that, and, um, we invited this group to Tassle Primary School to their fire prevention week, so we made a little color books to teach kids how to call nine-one-one with emergency, you know, a crown, and so we handed out, had a really good turnout, and let them see the annuals and everything. Um, I actually had a kid suffer a really bad nosebleed, and I actually was very able to remedy him until family got there, so that was, that was a good thing in there for that. We did standby for the Monster Basher, Be the Fair Grants. We volunteered for this event since we're raising money for the House of Fair Association. Um, we were promised free food, though all the crew would eat free, we didn't get that, but it's okay. They had a good time and, and no, no injuries or anything, so that worked out well. Um, we actually, we were invited to the Shakerad, I think it's the seventh, you know, Howland Lot Park, and, um, had a really good turnout there, I think Ethan John, I think you're on, Ethan, you're there. We had a lot of agencies come out for that, and it was a really good, a really good time, a couple of kids and everything. Um, training, we're doing a lot more training in-house and, um, having different agencies come in, you know, and help do training as well. We're also coming up with an F P O training program, where we're gonna put employees through a little more stricter process of, you know, learning.
What's that P E?
It's, uh, field training, we, we'll leave a slide in F P O, a field training officer, that'll help, um, improve, you know. It's field training. We will leave a slide in F P O, a field training officer that'll help improve, you know, skills and get some of the trucks better and our practices and policies. I attended training in Minnesota at the first of the month. And it's something I do once a year until, you know, COVID, this couple of years I did it. And I didn't realize while I was at that conference that only 9% of EMS services in the United States do the billing in-house, which is what I do. We rent their software, but I do billing in-house. And that saves us 5% to 10% on each dollar to bill in-house, which you're more susceptible to audits from Medicare. I went through two of those with no issues at all. So it was a really good conference. I learned a lot. And there's some new changes with Medicare coming up this year. That really helps. And helps increase your revenue, gives you more billing, you know, ideas and new ways to collect. We had an E V O class this month. And we really appreciate Don Thomas, he learned his apparatus and third problem as well. So they get through the class a little quicker. And we had that course and we had, I think it was 16 turnout for that and we're from different agencies, mostly our agency, but different agencies. And we've actually hired four people from that class that liked our bridge so well, you know, and kind of took a tour of the building. So we actually hired four more people, two full-time, two part-time. And that class is held by ours, which we are a member of. It's a $200 fee to become a member of them, but they, all their classes they offer are free. It wouldn't be $100 a student if we didn't have that blown through the association. So they came out and did that doors for free. And it was a really good turnout. Everybody had fun with that class. And everybody passed. And moving forward, we're going to start some new committees. And we've got a lot of new people wanting to get more involved and, you know, new faces and new people that want to, you know, start new things, which is a good thing. And we're starting like an event, we've got like four or five girls that want to do this. Plan like internal parties to distribute morale, to small things in the station. And also we're thinking about doing community events, like setting up, you know, try, we always try to set on Main Street for the moment and stuff like that. But maybe taking days of the week and announcing that and say, you want to come by and get free blood pressure check, blood sugar, you know, maybe do E P G. Maybe stuff like that, you know, get more awareness out, you know, people's help. And we've got a grant committee, which we've always had one. We meet every Wednesday, but we're just trying to get more people involved in that. We just received a $15,000 grant from the Community Foundation of Virginia. It was $15,000 to receive a new refurbished car. We had to put one on a service, so that helped a lot. We were worth that this month. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Dr. Colly helped write that grant, so thanks to him. We're also wanting to, you know, the drug and alcohol substance abuses is a really big issue in our community. We see it every day. And we're trying to partner up with Amy Sanders. And I didn't realize we actually have a clinic up here at the hospital. And she's giving me a lot of information and pamphlets and business cards. And we're thinking about, you know, on calls, well, we do it now on calls, handling that information and trying to talk to them. And maybe just, you know, give them an open line, you know, who's someone to talk to or, you know, and maybe send them in that direction or, you know, even families, you know, and try to get them aware that they have that help this year. And maybe get a, you know, process started there to hopefully recover it. We see a lot of, a lot of other disabilities there. And that last month, please. You do not know how much our station and especially me, you know, appreciate y'all's support for you.
So she's doing well after the vet business?
So yeah, I had, she's never had flea tick pill and it was a worm pill, it was a combination. She'd never had one before and it was like less than 12 hours she had a seizure. So we're thinking that's what it is. She's had one small one since, which she did require and everything, but they said it could take 30 days without the other seizures. But she's got all her vaccines and her certifications and everything. And she came from the Tazewell County Animal Shelter, so we were trying to do dental service because they're just completely overloaded up there. But all the employees shipped in, we got that bill paid off, so even one of our admin here shipped in and helped on the vet bills, so that was really awesome. I swear the morale of the station has just completely changed. You know, they come in, they're upset on a call and now she's there, white and tell, getting kisses. So she's, she's a very, very good dog and a lot of help for employees.
Well, you know, you did a lot of research before, taking steps.
Right, right, right. Well, the only trouble we have with her is if you leave your food on the table and walk into the room, she'll come up on the table. A lot of people come home back and say, what am I talking about? Other than that, yeah, she's a great dog. And we really appreciate your support and that's, that's helped a lot.
I don't think people realize how much comfort on a mountain one has, has grown. He's been a very big asset for that.
Right, right. You know, bad calls, you know, a dog can make a horrible difference come back to somebody that can't talk to, but you know, is there to comfort you.
I can see a line coming in future.
She also did a little doggy door. She doesn't have access. She's trained to use a doggy door. We have been and built her a little pin with some whatever wiring they had down there. Hummer, I mean, so not, yeah, she's doing awesome.
Well, that's great.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So next we're going to go into our unfinished business. So first is the first reading of the ordinance amendment to address coyotes. May I ask you that?
I'm going to pull over to the right side. Turn right. Yes, we already have in place in our town code, a Discharging Firearms Code section. This deals with the basically the legality of discharging firearms in the town limits. But it doesn't cover, at least it doesn't explicitly state dealing with, initially it was brought up about a couple of months ago, I did with coyotes. So I was asked to include some more refined language into the sections that were there to accomplish that. So what you had, it reads as follows. For the first reading, Section 1810 Discharging Firearms Generally be ordained by the council of town of Tazewell. That are hereby enacted following amendment to Town Code, Section 1810 Regarding Discharged Firearms and Corporal Limits of the Town. Now, Section 1810 Discharging Firearms Generally as amended, subsection A does not change. It shall be unlawful for any person to discharge any gun, pistol, rifle, shotgun, cannon, or other firearm within the corporal limits of the town. Evaluation of this section shall constitute a Class 1 misdemeanor. Subsection B has several changes. This section shall not apply to the following. One, any law enforcement officer in the performance of his or her official duties. That stays the same when this language is added. Including said officer's killing of coyotes or other vicious or nuisance animals. As defined by Virginia Department of Gaming and Fisheries, said discharge shall be as directed in the policies and procedures adopted by the chief of police. Number two, any person whose willful acts otherwise justified or excusable at law in the protection of his life or property. That stays the same with this added language or is otherwise specifically authorized by state law. Three, any person authorized to kill any animal or animals pursuant to and in compliance with Virginia Code, Section 25.1-5.9. Virginia Code 1950 has amended. That's for mandatory change. And then four, this is an added section. Veterans organizations, historical heritage organizations, honor guards or color guards discharging blank cartridges at funerals, barrels, parades, or other commemorative, celebratory, or educational events or during the practice, exercises, private sessions. That fourth one was added.
What about the, I think we brought that up once before about the animal destroying your house.
Groundhoges.
It's a war ant. Raccoons too.
Any, again, where raised, any animal pursuant to and in compliance with 29.15.29, broad. Stan's already worked on it. His officers already worked on it. I don't think this technically changes what they were capable of doing before, but it just further clarifies. And this is just the first reading. Have a second reading next month and then it'll be effective if you pass it in January.
I think we need some reference to you. Since nuisance animals.
Yeah.
So a firearm, what could go wrong?
So we want to just vote to approve this first reading or vote second?
Exactly. This is just the first reading.
It's the first reading.
No, not this time. That's why I turned over.
All right. So I didn't see any miscellaneous unfinished business, so we're going to go into our new business section. So a crew's request to partially close the Orchard Street Alley. So this we discussed before in the joint public hearing, so we need a motion to.
Approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor, or any discussion? On favor of approval, the request to partially close the Orchard Street Alley, State of Black and White, say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, State of Black and White, say a nay. Okay, so let's approve.
Just to clarify on that, the property owners that are chasing this have agreed to purchase. They've been told or instructed with the commissioner of revenue assigned as a value based on the square footage of $3,000. So they will have to, back tonight's meeting, they will be notified if they can purchase the property. They will submit a tender check to town and I'll have the ordinance vacation. They'll get in for court after we get the payment from them.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So next is to approve the ordinance of vacation for Baker Street River Road. Turn right.
This one's a little different. This is a throwback, going back 20, 22 years. There was a request made back in 2000 by, I don't remember the lady's name, Ms. Barbara Hurst. Who owns the property, y'all familiar with that property on Baker Street. It's a peninsula, it's behind the Baldwin Alley and North Tazewell Methodist Church. And River Road, when it was first established back in 1910 by the Fudge family. Went all the way around the river and went around, around behind the church. And it never was, it was dedicated, that was put on record, it was never officially opened in any use of the town. So back in 2000, this Hurst approached, at that point in time, Landowner Wood about closing the portion. Once it got to her property, she owned lots one through five, which were the last five lots that were green, got in the river and they were out in the peninsula. A street viewing committee was appointed. It was publicly advertised, had a public hearing, council came back, appointed a street viewing committee. They recommended that the street be closed, that portion of the street be closed, at least around her property. And give you some identifying information to it. River Road went all the way around Baldwin Alley, all the way back to Baker Street. And then what is now Baker Street, all the way to where Wilson Avenue is, across the river from the bridge there at. Yes. So all that was done, properly advertised, the whole nine yards. And the council approved the closure and an ordinance of vacation was never done. So let that fall on me 22 years ago. That should have been done. So I prepared an ordinance of vacation to accomplish that. I've spoken with the commissioner of revenue. They did assign a value to that property, although it really is, in my opinion, is worthless. It's literally to the creek. And there's nothing that anybody can ever do with it, no joint landowners can ever use it. So it will be absorbed into the existing parcel, which is 0948302E, triple zero one through triple zero five. And it had a new designation of A for this little strip that goes along the river and will merge into the as a property. They will be assessed a tax increase of $4,000 for that little strip. But it's one way that will be what I'm recommending, that just be, that merge into that property, be assessed as a tax value. An increase in tax revenues, but it won't be any type of compensation they pay for it because it's really, cannot be used for anything.
So you want to.
Basically just need to have it approved. I think you've got the ordinance drafted there. And it just needs to be approved and submitted to your package.
The only thing, like it mentioned the Ziegler's one here, and it does not look like the Ziegler's are the current property owner.
Right. Rural Housing is listed as the current owner. And that's the information I have from, this happened just last month, back in September of 23, and that has not been updated to show. Because I have recently, I think I had fifth, third bank in the last.
Right.
Main Street Church is the one up on the corner, right there.
Oh, that's okay.
What's, what's, what's his name? Your name?
Randy.
Yeah, it's my brother-in-law. What's, what's your name? And I'll tell him what your.
J J McKeon. I just talked to him about Food City a little bit ago.
Copy.
I tried to find one council.
Okay, I'll text. Thanks.
Is there a name?
That's public hearing over there.
There's, we've done, the council's done everything. That's the one thing, looking back through the files, everything in this property advertised, the minutes reflected, the public hearings, the assignment of the street viewing committee. Street viewing committee reported, and then voted by council to close everything that's surrounded this certain property. So all that took place. We just never got the ordinance of vacation. Councilmember Davis, what was your question again? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just wondering, so Ziegler was a name that was from way down.
Ziegler was one, and that it just happened here in the last two months. They acquired it on foreclosure sale. So really that's there for purposes of title reference. It helps them to show that everyone from this first forward, all their successors entitled are, are entitled to the benefit of this ordinance of vacation. Showing that property is owned by the landowner dating back to 2020, excuse me, 2002.
Yeah, when you look at the G I S, it looks like the G I S is already updated, taken out that route, but.
And I've been in touch with Wes the last several weeks about this, and they're all aware of it. But that is still reflected in fifth, third bank as the owner. So I just went ahead. I've covered it. Really, I could have left out the records altogether, but I'm going ahead just to give you the current, peace of mind. That's enough. All I need is your all's approvals for it, then I can go ahead and report it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? So all in favor of approval of the ordinance of vacation for Baker Street River Road, State of Black and White, say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, State of Black and White, say a nay. All right, so motion carries. So item number C is a litter grant award, may I ask you that?
Okay, each year we applaud for every opportunity that is out there. What I like, what I like to try to do is just recognize staff or their extended accomplishments. We got this before, I think Lee N and maybe some of her employees that have been working under her, receiving this grant. And I just want to say good job, but in the fact that you have every opportunity that I get to take the post, I want to say good job. A little over $4,800. We just, we give it to the staff because we want to make this check.
Perfect. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the Dumpert Park Inclusion ADA Playground Grant Application. Rob?
We had Ruth Badloin from Virginia Outdoors Foundation come by and drop off a packet of potential grants that we may be in line for. The two grants that she dropped off was the Preservation Trust Fund and the Get Outdoors Fund. So I started searching through to see if there was anything out there that we may be able to do. One thing that came to mind as I looked through the internet was an inclusive playground that we do not have in this area whatsoever. We have playgrounds, but none for children with wheelchairs, those with disabilities. And I thought that would be very beneficial to the area. So I called Ruth, talked with her. It definitely falls under the Get Outdoors Fund, but I'm really going to shoot with Preservation Trust Fund because it's a big pot of money there. You can get up to like 100,000, whereas the others only 25,000. So we had Game Time send us a quote, has all the equipment, they'll be on the sidewalk, all the the platform will be all the rubberized so that the wheelchairs can actually roll through there, not in mulch and not kind of like. With mulch, even if it's rubberized, it tilts the wheelchairs. So that's, that's not going to work. So he's going to, he gave me the whole thing for like, I think the total quote was 167,000. We won't open it to January. These don't open up to January. We can actually look at the grant, see what's going to be requested from us. But I know with the Preservation Trust Fund that the property has to be protected forever. So you have to do a deed of dedication to open space. And we needed to make sure that the current deed wasn't protected by anyone else, and it's not protected by anyone else. But I have a short video, if you all just had just a couple of minutes, to tell you why this is really important, and they can express it more than I can express it.
My vision was just to see all of our students and the community being able to play together. So what we really wanted to be mindful of this time around was all the changes that happened with inclusive playground equipment. Really finding those spaces where students don't have to feel like they are by themselves because they're in their wheelchair or because they can't access something. Everyone's in it together.
It started over a year ago. It is a national demonstration site for inclusion. It does, it does meet all those key points. With a combination of that and then fitting their unique footprint and needs, it's allowed me to come. me to come up with the solutions and kind of move forward with our design.
There's nothing like seeing people of all ages, students, adults, people in wheelchairs, you know, three by three, just being able to roll on and enjoy the same activities with their able-bodied peers. It just, it brings tears to your eyes.
My son Will are up there, Will goes to Cades. We couldn't ask for any place better, because it's one thing to have it where it includes kids of all types and abilities, but when you can include their brothers and sisters, you can include their parents, that's what everyone else wants. That's when you talk to any parent who's like us, all they want is for things to be typical, or things to be similar, or to be able to do the things that their other kids are doing. So now we can kind of operate somewhat on the same level, and that's just, that's phenomenal.
It's about relationship, right? And like, I might have completely different interests. I might like Penn State, you might like Ohio State, you might not like football at all, you know, but like, you might ask me about my hat, I might ask you about my shoes, you know, and like, that's what happens when you bring people together.
I don't know if that would be really good in this community. We don't have anything like that here in a property.
You're just going to have a little idea about a proper little, you know, until you be.
Right there beside the shelter at Dumpert Park, there's a big area there, there could be enough room for that. We've already got a designated fishing stream for kids, so I thought that would work out perfectly.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Look forward to hearing what comes out.
That's something, Susan will be taking care of that in my eye.
I thought you might come back and make a show.
No, definitely.
Thanks, Rob. So the next on the agenda is the legislative reception mandatory debate.
Okay, each of you received an email, some of you might even received hotel verification and didn't even know you were going to. And I apologize for that. What we try to do for any of these governmental events is just book up rooms until I have the opportunity to meet with you. Legislative trip, when it was announced, room probably already booked up. So we've got five, we can cancel, there's no penalty, but anybody that's interested in that January 30th and 31st trip, there'll be in line in January the 30th and 31st. So just let me know as soon as possible whether you're interested in that. And several other locales, obviously, because much of that will be there for session, will be the evening of 31st. I'm going to set up meetings with DHCV and VDOT, they're the only two target funding entities that I'm asked to write down for different projects that we've got. We can do other meetings, obviously, they can only got two that they're participating in. So just let me know if you're interested in going, so I can take care of it.
Do you want to respond to the email?
Yeah, I'll send now. Each, I'll remind you names or like.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we added an item out for, so we had a vacancy in our IDDA, and it was discussed that Danny Willis was interested, so I need a motion to, or at least contact Danny Willis to, if he's still interested in taking part in that.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of adding Danny Willis to the IDDA, states of West, say a aye. Aye. All opposed, states of West, say a nay. Okay, so Todd, you make the letter out.
Okay, I've got one more thing before, before we close out that I'll only talk about. Back about 33 years ago, a young lady by the name of Rob, I think she was 10 years old at the time, came to work at the Town of Tassel. And it literally defines the law of local government for any governmental employee to, to work at any single location, much less at multiple locations in local government. It takes a strong, shoulder individual to sustain public service for that length of time, and still say, it still remains same, what she's done. Yeah, I was going to say. I could go on all night with Rob. I know she's served for three or four different town managers, multitude of councils, she's fought diversity, she's been, been through a whirlwind of issues, just like every other employee. But Rob, on behalf of the town, especially me, I want to say thank you for your contribution, for your dedication, your loyalty, for not quitting, for standing up for staff, for being the go-to person in every department. Brandit calls on, Police Department calls on, Rescue Period Department goes to Rob, and calls up her historical miles, but you have no idea, you know, what she endured, and any governmental employee endures to sustain that longevity. But I just want to say thank you for not quitting. Thank you for not giving up, and I'm serious, and we're going to miss you. We feel like, we feel like we're not replacing you, we're replacing the position. I'm really excited about working with Susan and what she's brought to the table already gives me a breath of fresh air that I too have a future. Anyway, I just want to say thank you for what you've done, the late nights that you've set up doing, doing time sheets when you were on vacation, taking calls from me, and every other department did when you were on vacation, home working. I can't say enough, I can't say enough about those boys cracking, so.
Well, Rob?
Counsel here, I hope, stand up and keep your clap, because you did great.
He did. I've always said I'm blessed, because this is not just a job for me, for my family. Two ways, there's not one person that I don't call on, they wouldn't come out in a second notice, and I appreciate it.
We're going to miss you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if we really want to know something, we don't call five. We call neither.
So get ready, Susan.
She's absolutely made it to speed transition. She's been the easiest person to train that I have ever had in the industry.
Great.
So next on the agenda is miscellaneous public comments. Let me slide in. Okay, so next, council member comments.
I would like to make a comment about the Veterans Day Parade. It was beautiful, big, long, and outstanding. But there's only one little thing that I got a little upset with, the parade's a parade. You can't, I hate to hear motorcycles in front of a band, and the motorcycle revving up, I mean, that's, I ain't got nothing against motorcycles, but it's like seeing them somewhere away from the band, or anybody's playing music. It's like the fire department, you know, there to rid her, and I like to see that change a little bit, and it's going to be one heck of a parade next year. And I ain't got nothing against the motorcycles.
We'd be happy to have help lining up the people at the hospital.
Help?
To help line up, we'd be happy for help, if there are complaints.
Yeah, what I did it the first time, I, me and Lynn started this thing a long time ago, the parade, and I had a hard time getting the council to understand about this Veterans Day Parade in Town of Tassel. But I'll tell you right now, I'm glad it's still going, I'm glad it's growing, and I'm proud to get that started for this town. Richland's had one, Bluefield has one, but Town of Tassel hasn't had a, have a Veterans Day Parade until I came on council, and I had to start this up. It took me a little bit for my, some of the council members that we had, they said, go ahead and do what you got to do. So I said, well, they don't care about a man stepping up and asking. And I went to Richland, found another lady that was, that she came in, and she approached me at Richland, says, why can't we have a Veterans Day Parade? And I said, you're hired, come on with me. I said, you come to the next council meeting and bring that up, because you've got all males on council seats. And they said, oh, yeah, as much we can help you with, and all that. And I said, thank you, boys. And that's where we started the Veterans Day Parade. But it's one of the best days.
What year was that, do you remember?
Was that Dave through the?
I think it's in 2016 or something in that area, isn't it?
I remember the 14.
We had Jack Harry.
P-51.
We had Jack Harry.
Yeah, I remember that. I'd give you a heart attack.
And you had Jimmy Christa, Dana's not here, but Patrick Christa, and a couple more on there. But we all, we got it, we did it, and I'm happy and I'm proud of us and everybody. Now, you know, saying this, click the page. And another thing I wanted to bring in is.
We're waiting on you.
The, the, the next thing is the, the bands for, they're growing, and football teams getting tougher, and I hope, like, we can get this game started in this league, beat this town, the Bears, I'll be in, okay.
Motion to the elected.
Just have one more, we had some community lineup days that you guys helped facilitate and get lined up, and just wanted to say thanks to everybody who participated, and don't litter, it's tech. But thanks to everybody who came out.
I thank y'all for what you did.
Oh, glad we need the adjournments. So if there's nothing else by council, could I get a motion to adjourn? Could I get a second? All in favor of adjournments, states of West, say a aye. All opposed, states of West, say a nay. Do not leave, we're going back to.